According to my notes, it is 5:30. We will get this city council meeting. It's the regular city council meeting for Monday, May 18th, 2020. According to Minnesota statute 13D dot zero two one, it allows meetings to be conducted by phone or other electronic means under the following conditions. Number one, the mayor has determined an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted under section 13D dot zero two is not practical due to a health pandemic. The mayor and all councilors participating in the meeting can hear one another and can hear all discussion. The attendance by the public is not feasible due to a health pandemic. At least one member of the city council is physically present at the regular meeting, unless unfeasible due to a health pandemic. Today, in our council chambers, you have myself and Councillor Kraus. The other three councilors are on the phone and we are able to hear them. All votes will be conducted by a roll call vote, and every member needs to be identified. With that being said, the first item on our agenda today is to approve the agenda with some additions and a deletion. The first addition that we have is a resolution approving an employee to return back to work with conditions. And two mayoral appointments. One will be to Representative to KCDAs, and the other one will be three representatives on the Recreation Commission. We have correspondence. We have a letter of support for 2020 discretionary grant fund for Cootch County, the International Falls Library Board of Trustees meeting packet, and information on the cancellation of Memorial Day services for Peter Graham Post 2948. We also have one addition or one deletion from this agenda, and that will be under the public hearing. The number one item under public hearing, which would be the first reading of contract ordinance approving the lowest responsible bidder for the 2020 CIP sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. So we're, council's wishes with the additions and deletions and approving the agenda.
Can I make the motion?
Okay, we have a motion by, we have a motion by Councillor Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second discussion, please, Walt.
Um, why the deletion? I just don't, I don't, I don't, I don't not disagree with or disagree with it, I just want to know why the deletion, what was the reason for it?
Administrator Anderson?
Didn't understand his question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the question is, why do we have the deletion under section one for the public hearing?
Counsel and mayor, the engineering firm was anticipating perhaps bringing the same company back, but they needed to do more information on this particular firm. It's not a company that they've looked at, so they want to have additional time to do due diligence. So an email was sent out this afternoon, just asking for it to be deleted from this particular agenda, so that they could complete whatever due diligence was still necessary to move forward with their particular bid.
Did you hear that, Walt?
Thank you.
Okay.
You're very good, thank you very much.
Yep. So we have a motion by Councillor Nelson. We have a second by Councillor Buller to accept the additions and the one deletions to the agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councillor Deech.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Kraus.
Aye.
Councillor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of May 4th, the regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes at this time.
Move.
Okay, we have a motion by Councillor Deech. We have a second by Councillor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question, Councillor Deech.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Kraus.
Aye.
Councillor Buller.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next is our special city council meeting of Thursday, May 7th, 2020, special emergency city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Move.
I have a motion by Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second, Councillor Buller.
We have a second by Councillor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question, excuse me, Councillor Deech.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Abstention.
Councillor Kraus.
Aye.
Councillor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, four for the motion and one abstention. Next, we will do the payments of claims for and the accounts payable. Looking at the numbers that we have on this one, we do have for the City of International Falls transfers from the one to the 101 Fund, the general fund, $9,951.67. That's coming from water. The 601 Fund, $5,559.67, and coming from the Fund 603 Sewer, $4,392. We're moving to our permanent improvement fund, $66,366.66. That is coming from two different funds, the 601 Water and the 603 Sewer, both in the amount of $33,333.33. Going to the Capital Reserve for Outlay, $25,760.42. That's coming from water. 601 Fund, $19,136.70, I'm sorry, 17 cents. And from the 603 Sewer, $6,624.25, for a total amount of transfers of $102,378.75. City of International Falls Airport Claims, $380,298.62. And Airport Commission Claims of $6,341.3. Airport Commission, I'm sorry, International Falls Public Library Board Claims of $6,011.50, for a total amount of payable and claims of $392,651.15. The Chair would entertain a motion to accept the resolution to pay the transfers and claims.
Move.
We have a motion by Councillor Kraus for the transfers and claims. Do we have a second? Looks like we're not paying bills this month, boys.
Councillor Deech, second.
Okay, we have a second by Councillor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councillor Deech.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Kraus.
Aye.
Councillor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have audience open forum. Is there anyone online that would like to address the council at this time? We do limit it to five minutes, and if you do have any questions that you would like to ask throughout the course of this meeting on the Zoom chat group, you can also ask your question, and we can address that in the audience portion after if you have questions about something that's happened at tonight's meeting. At this time, I will unmute everybody, and then I will mute them all again when we move forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council at this time? Okay, all right, again, you do have an opportunity later in the meeting if you'd like to bring something up.
Well, I appreciate that.
All right, so now we've got to unmute the people that we need. We'll get Councillor. All right, and got to get down here. I apologize for that. Okay, next, we will go right into our agenda, and we have the first reading of the contract ordinance approving the lowest responsible bid for 15th Street Improvement Project, and award that to KGM Contractors with a bid amount of $365,560.20. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that bid.
Councillor Buller, I shall move.
We have a motion by Councillor Buller. Do we have a second?
Councillor Deech.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. At this point, this is a public hearing, so I will unmute everyone. If you do want to bring up anything on the public hearing for the approval of awarding the contract to KGM Contractors for the 15th Street Project, this is your opportunity All right, hearing none, I will bring it to a vote of the city council or discussion of the city council. Any members of the city council want to have discussion on the awarding of the lowest bid? Hearing none, I will call the question, Councillor Buller, or I'm sorry, Councillor Deech.
He's muted.
I see.
He had Walter somehow muted.
Hold on, I'm going to get him. I'm going to make sure that he has an opportunity to talk. All right, Councillor Deech.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Buller.
Aye.
Councillor Kraus.
Aye.
No vote yes, five zero, motion passes. Next is the first reading of the contract ordinance approving the lowest responsible bid for the 2020 street improvement projects to KGM Contractors in the amount of $977,688.50. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that bid.
Councillor Buller, I shall move.
We have a motion by Councillor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Kraus. Again, this is a, a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to talk about or have a discussion about KGM as the contractor for the bid, now would be the time to do that. You will have to unmute yourself if you would like to chat, because I seem to mess it up when I bring everybody in at once. All right, hearing none, Chair would entertain, or Chair would call the question on the first reading, Councillor Deech.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Kraus.
Aye.
Councillor Buller.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. And next is the reconsidering of amending ordinance number 38 of the fifth series, which is the emergency order that the city council has put on to our local restaurants to not allow customers inside the building for takeout. Again, this is, this was put into place shortly after the governor's orders were to close restaurants and bars. This was one of the orders that we had put on. This did not pass at a special city council meeting of a, excuse me, a two-two vote, and we have it back on the agenda today to have more discussion. There has been changes to the governor's orders. Last Wednesday, last, yeah, last Wednesday, the governor had made the choice to open up Main Streets retail with a preparative plan. At this point, businesses are allowed to have customers come in, do shopping with additional, additional safety measures going in. We would, at this time, take a look at that ordinance that the city had passed roughly six weeks ago, seven weeks ago. So at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to consider amending or deleting the emergency order number 38.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to delete the order, and I will discuss it further after.
Okay, we have a motion to delete the order by Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Councillor Buller, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councillor Kraus made the motion, Councillor Buller had the second. Open discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Given that the state has opened up realty, the rest of the retail establishments to in-person, I feel that it's only fair at this point that we do the same for our restaurants and lower the restriction. I think if he would have continued the, if Governor Walz would have continued the stay at home instead of the stay, or safer at home initiative that he started now, we may consider this, but at this point, I think being more restrictive is not necessarily, it's no longer an even playing field, because now all retail establishments are open. So that's my rationale.
Okay. Additional discussion from the council? I, oh, please, I don't know, let's go with Councillor Nelson next.
The only thing I would note is, you know, I do agree with this at this point, considering we've been looking to the governor for guidance on this throughout this entire ordeal, and there was a lot of backlash from the community. Unfortunately, a lot of those people are not at this city council meeting despite some invitations to do so. But I think we have to make it very clear that we were looking and continue to look to the governor for some guidance on this stuff. You know, it's, he has opened up the state and general retail and all of those things. He does come out wearing masks, which I do encourage everyone else in our community to continue to do, is using those masks. I just want to just point out that there was a lot of confusion too about what we are able to control. And I don't know how much of this is going to be publicized for everyone else to read, but I really, I want to encourage the community, if they have input, to come to the meetings or call your councillor, because there was a whole bunch of opinions, and I have not received a single phone call. I received no phone calls on this. I've received phone calls on chickens, but not this. And that's exceptionally frustrating as a councillor to be expected to mind read on some of these things. I do agree with Councillor Kraus, you know, with the governor's order, the more leniency that's in place, I do agree that now is a good time to do it. I just wanted to air that frustration.
Okay, thank you. I believe Councillor Buller had something to add?
I do have the same sentiment as Chelsea does. I think, I think everybody's so open and on social media, but not coming and talking to anybody. I have had it on social media where we're being criticized for what we're doing, but still, nobody comes to a meeting, nobody does anything. I agree with Joey on this too, that we need to, need to go ahead with it.
Okay. And Councillor Deech, did you have something to add to the discussion this evening?
I agree with the other councilors 100% with the idea, if need be, maybe we would have to put this ordinance back in effect. We're just starting to feel the effects of this pandemic, and it's going to get worse before it gets better in International Falls. And I guess we should keep an open mind in case this has to be put back into force.
Thank you. And I guess my piece stands with the rest of the council on this, and I want to be, I want to be clear. My decision was 100% that in the event that the governor, and I did not think that the governor was going to open up businesses. I did not believe that that was going to be the move he made, but I also knew that if, if we did not allow people to go into our main retailers to do shopping, small shopping local, to our local places, but yet we still allowed in our essential services, I did not have any intention with the unkind words on social media or anything, anybody else's decision. My decision was going to stand firm that if our Main Street couldn't be opened, our restaurants could do curbside. As long as our businesses were having to do curbside, I was going to continue with allowing my, the restaurants to do curbside. But I was shocked, I was impressed that the governor's orders did open up Main Street, open up these small retailers, and if you can go in and pick up a dress at some of our shops downtown, or go get a pair of pants at some of our other facilities, or pick up a board game, you can go pick up a pizza, you can go in and get a sub, and I am willing to release the restrictions. I do echo my fellow city councilors here. Please give us a call. I think a lot of the miscommunication that could have happened would have been able to be solved by reaching out to us. The few people that did reach out to me about it when I explained it was the difference between being able to walk in and pay for your pizza, or have your pizza delivered to you outside, or your food being able to be picked up inside or your food delivered outside, they were like, oh, that only makes sense. So just have a conversation with your fellow city councilors, with your mayor, even, even our city staff. They're very well knowledgeable on the things that we're doing. And one of this, the things that this city council has done more so than any council I've been a part of, is we try to be as transparent on what we're doing. So please reach out to us, and we want to be part of the conversation, and we want to work on these solutions together. And I also want to say, and I brought this up last time, for anyone that's frustrated with some of the decisions that our council is making through COVID-19, there is no right path. There is a path which is going to help our business community get up, and then there's also a path that's going to keep us a little bit safer. Our, our community is divided by this, and with that being said, our city council is too, and we are a very good representation of the community as a whole. So I know that I've spent a lot of time on this one, but I really think that this is a couple of the things that we're going to be going through with COVID-19 is going to be split votes, but that means that we're a very good representative council of our community as a whole, and we all respect each other moving forward. So without having any other discussion, I would call the question on the deletion of ordinance 38. Councillor Deech.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Kraus.
Aye.
Councillor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, five zero, the motion carries. Next, we have a resolution providing the issuance of sales, of sale for 500, I'm sorry, $5,745 general obligation, sales tax revenue bond. George, you are on. Can you hear us, George?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
We can, I can. Okay, good, sorry. Yes, George Irelandson, Northland Securities, thank you for the time on your agenda. And there was a bond sale summary sent up. Did Mayor, you and other councilmembers receive that?
Uh, did it get emailed to everyone? Yep, yes, we did.
Okay, I did. I will primarily review or refer to that document. Certainly, please stop me if you have any questions. I'll try to keep this the, Mayor, kind of give me that sign if I'm talking too long. But the, yes, that one. So the purpose of these bonds, this is of course your general obligation sales tax bonds, financing street utility improvements. So that's our purpose. This morning, we went out for bids at 10:30, and I tell you what, I'll come right back to that, but the, we worked with your city staff on the assignment of a bond rating for this issue, and worked with the firm Standard and Poor's. The, the result of that was, was very good. The Standard and Poor's did a thorough review of the city's finances, you know, growth, you know, looking at all facets of the community, your past finances, performance of the general fund, major employers, city funds, et cetera. And so what they do is they take all that information, compare you to others in other communities in those categories, those rating categories, and they come up with, for the City of International Falls, an A-plus rating, which I think is a very good rating for International Falls. Some of the highlights of that bond rating are strong management with good financial policies and practices, adequate budgetary performance with operating surpluses in the general fund, very strong budgetary flexibility with available fund balance of 51% of operating expenditures, and very strong debt and contingent liability profile. That's a mouthful, but basically what it means is you have very little debt, actually no debt service paid by governmental funds, because you've got, basically, this is your only bond, and it's paid for by sales tax revenue. So, you know, certainly they also look at other things like population decline. I mean, certainly they reference a couple of things, population decline, they reference, you know, median household incomes perhaps being less than the state average, but, but those positives that I referenced, those certainly outweighed any, any concerns, any negatives that were brought to light. So, so I just wanted to give kudos to your staff, council, they did a great job preparing for that rating call, and certainly providing information and providing follow-up to the rating agency. The, so again, an A-plus bond rating was assigned. If you have the overview on page two of that, is the bid tab. This gives an overview of investment banks that provided bids on the financing. So we received five bids this morning with the, we award based on the far right-hand column, which is true interest cost. And United Bankers Bank out of Bloomington, Minnesota, provided the low interest cost of 1.32%, a very favorable bid. We had, you know, certainly five bids, and if you see in that far right-hand column, they, they all work right on top of each other, which, which we like to see that. So we had a little separation between the five bids, but the low bid is what matters here. They provided a very strong bid of a true interest cost of 1.32%. The, now Mayor, when you brought up the topic of a resolution, so yes, the council, once I get done with my long-winded presentation here, will have a resolution to consider. In the preliminary, the preliminary sizing of the bond, when we took it out for bids, it was $5,745,000. Actually, Mayor, when, when a motion is considered for an awarding, we should have a council member state the new bond size, which is $5,550,000, which is $195,000 less than what we went out to bid for. So this happened on the EDA refunding bond several months ago, where we received bond premium, and we downsized the bonds on the day of sale. So that same thing occurred here. We were downsizing by 195,000. 160,000 of that is what's called bond premium, and about 35,000 is from the investment bank, the low bidder, United Bankers Bank, working for less than what we allow for. So when we put it out for bid, we said, okay, you have 1.1% that you can work for of the principal amount of the bonds. They work for a little over half of that. So nice reduction there, $35,000 of unused discount, and so we use that to downsize the bonds again. So with that favorable financing result, the structure of the bonds, we went out with 12 years, that was, in, in working with the council and working with your staff, it was, that was the right length of financing for this size of bond to kind of get you to that targeted level of debt. targeted level of debt service, which was in the ballpark of 550,000 per year. As a result of these good bids, debt service will come in at approximately 530,000 per year. So a nice reduction there, certainly the right direction to go. So I mentioned this to Ken earlier, that there was a time, and Mayor, you're not giving me that sign yet, so I'm going to keep talking, but there was a time where the city council said, I, I, my understanding is, you know, the interest rates are favorable, we thought, hey, let's maybe get into the market sooner than later. And what you did is you delayed and, and waited until you got your construction bid in. Now the brilliant move, because interest rates really have fallen nicely. And so, nice reduction in interest rates, and you can, you can really see that in, to a certain extent, on the cover page, we show a little comparison of April 20th, when you had a resolution calling for this sale, and what the bids are today. So, so interest rates have certainly dropped, and certainly, the end result is, is a very favorable financing, and I'm happy with these results. Nice to get five bids, and, and actually, that's the same number of bids you got on the EDA refunding as well. Call date, these bonds are callable February 1 of 2028, and any date thereafter. So Mayor, that's, Mayor and members of the council, that's the quick overview of this bond issue, can certainly address any questions you might have.
I got nothing.
Okay, well, for the first time, Councilor Kraus did not have a question for you or a statement back.
Oh, great work, George.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, very nice timing of this, you never know about timing until it occurs, but the market really cooperated nicely here, and so I, I think this, this sale turned out really good for the city.
I don't think you even know the half of how good this turned out for us. All right, the, the chair would entertain a motion at this time to approve the resolution providing the issuance of a sale of, with the updated number of, I'm sorry, 500 and 500.
5,550.
5,550, towards the general obligation sales tax, sales tax revenue bonds.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus, do we have a second?
A second, both to Deech.
We have a, a second by, said by Councilor Buller, and then Councilor Deech. So we're going to go with Councilor Buller, he got his word in first. All right, any discussion on, on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
All I want to say is I am beyond impressed. Again, I'd, I'd like to thank Northland Securities for everything that they did. George, you've been absolutely amazing, and this could not be better for the city. I can't, I, I would have never guessed that we would have been under 2%, and here we are. So, at under 1.4%. So, great work, it really, this is, this is going to be great.
Any other council discussion on this one?
Thank you.
Well, I just, I just want to let everybody know that from the sales tax, this is a, a bond that we are, that we are using against the sales tax money that the voters put into place two Novembers ago. It's taken a little while to get here, we do have a CIP of the work that we're going to be doing this summer. That number came in roughly $500,000 under budget. Now, the, the, the bid that we ended up getting for our sales tax bond was 100 and, what was it, 170, 190,000 under budget, under what we had expected. So, the sales tax that's allowing us to do a lot of these public works, we have timed absolutely perfectly from the time that we asked the, the voters to let us do it, the time it's taken us to get all of our ducks in a row, to make sure that we have projects, the, when the projects came in, and ultimately, how we're paying for it. So, kudos to Mayor Anderson, Cynthia Jaxa, for putting this into place a while back. The city council that I first came on with, and obviously, the city council I sit with now, there's been a lot of work to get to where we're at today. City staff, a, a ton of kudos to both the current director of our public works, Ted Brokaw, our, our past public works director, Ian Gary Skolman, and WSN, which has worked with us the whole way. So we have been able to save a lot of money, and we have a lot of projects that are going to be starting this summer. So, with that being said, I just want to give as much kudos to staff and everybody that's been involved in this two-year project to get us where we're at. So, thank you all. With that being said, I will call the question, Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much, George.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilor.
Is there anything we have to do immediately following this meeting to make sure that this is all good and ready to go?
Certainly, it just took a big step, which is approving the resolution. The only, and Ken has the documents, that we just have a proposal form from the low bidder, United Bankers Bank, that needs to be emailed back to us by 9:00 AM tomorrow.
You and I need to sign.
So that's more of the front burner thing, but other, other items can wait.
Okay, sounds like a winner. Thank you so much, George.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. All right. Next, we will, I will accept a motion to remove from the table consideration to approve phased opening plan and preparative plan for the International Falls Public Library.
I'll move on that.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus to remove that from the table, do we have a second?
Councilor Buller, I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller to remove that from the table. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, in front of us is consideration to approve the phased opening plan and the preparative plan for the International Falls Library, and I believe we have our library director on board. Diane, how are you this evening?
Good, hoping I can open tomorrow.
I'm hoping you can too.
I have had probably 10, 15 people banging on the doors today.
Well, don't let them bang on the doors tomorrow, I think we're going to move forward with this. Does the council have any question about the preparative plan that Diane had submitted two weeks ago?
I commend you, Diane. You did a great job.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
All right, and then, as a follow-up to that, Diane, do you have anything to add to the preparative plan, or any, anything you want to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, so then the chair would entertain a motion to accept the preparative plan, including the attachment that was presented by the city administrator, that we adopted with all the other preparative plans. With that being said, chair would entertain a motion to accept.
Councilor Buller, I so moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, do we have a second? Maybe not, Diane, who knows?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson.
Wednesday, aye, am I muted?
No, you're not now, I heard you now. Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Diane, go ahead and let those people in tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, have a great day.
You too.
Okay, night. Next, we have to remove from the table consideration of planning for summer activities, City Beach open or closed. Chair would entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
Councilor Buller, I so moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Nelson, a very quiet Councilor Nelson. All right, we have a motion, second, we will open up the, I will call the question, Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. So now we have in front of us the consideration for summer activities at City Beach, whether we will be open or not. Ken, do you want to just give us some background information on this particular item? Not that we don't know what it is, but just for background.
Thank you, Mayor and council. For background information, the discussion is, is what to do with City Beach, and as everybody is aware, City Beach has a playground. We have the beach where people can swim, and then there's also a campground with six sites. We, the council had discussed this at a previous meeting, and had allowed the camp hosts to come, whether or not the beach was going to be open for public use, and we discovered that, well, today, actually, the camp hosts did arrive, so they, they arrived, and we have them here. I know there's some discussion with Bill Mason, and he's trying to prep and has prepped the personnel that he has lined up for this summer to serve as lifeguards. We have had some correspondence back and forth with the Public Health Department with Koochichin County, and they've been reaching out in earnest with the Minnesota Department of Health about whether or not beaches are recommended to be open, closed, what kind of limitations and restrictions might be placed on them if they are open. And as far as I am aware, that information has not been forthcoming from the Minnesota Department of Health. And so, we wanted to bring this back to, for council discussion at this meeting, because there's some concerns about where, you know, where we, where we go from here, and do we want to open, and to what extent. My understanding was, is that previously, the governor's order did not allow overnight camping, but he was allowing seasonal camping, and I don't know if that changed in the last executive order that he just adopted. I, I actually, I had it included in the pack, and I, I don't know how it applies to camping, so I can't speak to that. But, that's basically where we're at. I know that there's some members of the City Beach Committee that were, are eager to see it open and to participate in a meeting and, and with cleanup for the beach before we get here for summer, but we need to have that discussion and see how the council wants to move forward.
Council members, just to give you background information, of all the things that we had on our agenda tonight, this is the one that I had, I hands down spent the most amount of time on. If I look at the CDC guidelines, it says that opening up a beach is, is safe, you should be able to open up a beach, but on the CDC guidelines, it says that you shouldn't have playgrounds open. So then I go to the Minnesota Department of Health, and I look at theirs, and it says you should have playgrounds open, but it gives no background information on what we should do with beaches or other activities. We add into the weird factor that we have camping available at the, at there for RVs and such like that, so we have a weird mismatch of what we have available at our, at our facility. I have been struggling with this one for quite some time. I would love to have an open, frank discussion with the council on what their thoughts are on this. I, I, I really just don't know how to go with this one. So, the chair would, at this time, open discussion with the council, frank discussion before we make a, a motion on how, which way or the other we want to go. I'll start with Councilor Deech, what are your thoughts on, on opening or closing City Beach?
I would like to see the swimming area open, kind of like Rainier Beach has. As far as opening the showers, any concessions that may be there, camping grounds, where there's going to be a lot of contact with other people's hands and, and touching various things, maybe sneezing on something, I guess I'm against opening that area, but as far as the swimming area with a lifeguard, I would be open to that.
Okay. Councilor Nelson, what are your thoughts?
I do want to see the beach be able to open, I don't want to overly burden anyone, though. So, my biggest concern with campgrounds opening, or swimming pools, or, or, not swimming pools, lakes, beaches, isn't that they're doing those things, which I think is another confusion around why camping isn't allowed in a lot of the state, is because of the shared facilities. So, I don't have any problem with going and doing your own thing, camping, going to the beach, whatever, it's the shared facilities that I have a really big concern with, and I don't want to overly burden, I don't know how many lifeguards we have, if one of them is able to consistently sanitize these shared facilities or not, but I think the safest option, and the, when I look at the most reasonable option to appease as many people as possible, is to allow it to open, but we also need to have some safety measures in place, and that's going to be sanitizing. And if that's too burdensome, I, I would agree with Mr., or Councilor Deech, that it's hard to open those shared facilities, if we just don't have anyone in there to go sanitize them, because there may be people that do want to go to the beach, and you can't, I guess you can be in the lake, it's frowned upon, I think, maybe, I frowned upon it, I guess, but, you know, we do need those facilities to be open, and if we can't do that, you know, then we, we have a tougher question. So I guess my first question is how feasible it is to open and sanitize those shared facilities.
Okay, and we'll get to that conversation too, just, we'll try to gauge where everyone's at. Councilor Kraus.
I have to agree with both councilors, I think we can open it, but we've got to do it safely, but it is my understanding that we have a committee, correct?
Yep.
So, I, I guess I would say, I don't have a problem opening it, but I'd like to see that committee meet, and maybe give us the recommendations like we do with other things, and then move forward. So, I'm okay, if the unilateral motion is to open, I'm okay with that, but I, I kind of want to defer to the committee to come up with kind of the plan as to what it's going to look like.
Well, and, and to your point, one of the, the weird things that has happened in this COVID-19 thing is, as early as I became mayor, I've been asked on when we're going to start having some meetings for City Beach, and ultimately, my goal was to start having them in May. And so here we are, and, you know, we're just, we have to have a, a meeting with, with those people, and that's one of the things that I would like to have the discussion on when we get to boards, committees, and department heads, on when we can get the City Beach Committee to meet, to handle some of these things as well. Councilor Buller, your thoughts?
You know, I'm the lucky one, I'm at the end of this cold conversation, and I agree with all of it. No, I, I do have a concern too with the, the touchpoints out there, with, I mean, you can't hardly open it up without a restroom, but somebody's got to be taking care of like touchpoints and, and actually sanitizing those areas especially, and, and I don't, I don't really see, I know, the summer's kind of, or spring kind of got away in all of us, you know, I, I didn't really realize that already next Monday is Memorial Day, and we're having a cemetery board meeting tomorrow night, just because we couldn't find a warm place to have it. I said, well, have it at my place, now, you have it in the garage, or whatever, we can do it, told you. But, I think this, this summer's kind of caught up, and I don't, I don't think it's an urgency right now, I think it's good to have, kind of have the meeting in, in open soon, but I think summer's here, because we haven't realized that we didn't have a spring.
Right.
I think we need to move, move fast on this, and try to get a decision made, and move forward, because I, I think everybody wants to do something. I mean, the weather's warm now, I know the water's cold yet, but I think you just need to move, move so that people can go out and have some fun.
Okay. And, and the one thing that I've thought about this with, with the research that I was doing, is, I, I do find it interesting that, that according to the CDC, not the state of Minnesota, the state of Minnesota says that playgrounds can be open, but I, the way I kind of was looking at that is, I found it weird that someplace that has a lifeguard, they're recommending to be open with a lifeguard, which is someone else that is essentially watching your children, and obviously, parents are doing that as well, but it puts someone else at risk to go in to the But it puts someone else at risk to go in to the water in the event that kids are not healthy or whatever it is. But then at the playgrounds, which the CDC does not claim is a safe place because of all the touchpoints and everything, there's, there's just parents there to watch the people. So it's, it's one of those things where, again, one of the frustrations through all of the COVID-19 questions and decisions that we're making, we're getting mixed messages between the state level, the federal level, and the world level. So I, too, would like to see the beaches open. I think we're at a point where people are going to have to make decisions for their own personal health. If they choose not to go to the beach because they don't feel safe, they don't have to go to the beach. On the flip side, if, if you're not feeling well, as a, as a general rule, please don't go out in public, whether it's the beach or the restaurant or wherever you're going. So I, too, would like to see the beaches be able to open up. I would like to see the City Beach Committee have a meeting so we can start to discuss some of the things that have been pushed down the road a little bit. And again, all of these were best of intentions before COVID-19 kicked in. We had a game plan of what we wanted to do out there, so, or at least have discussions on what we want to do out there. So at this time, the chair would entertain a, a motion to handle City Beach moving forward. And as I understand, we generally open it June 1st. Is that correct?
Whenever we have a camp host available, it's typically around Memorial Weekend, and, and right after that is when the lifeguards are available. We can open it earlier with the camp host present, and we could go later than Labor Day in September with the camp host present.
Okay. So we could, we can open it at any time at this point if the council so chooses with having a camp host available. So the chair would entertain a motion from the council regarding City Beach at this time.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just make a comment regarding the, prior to a motion being present, and I mentioned that I was unclear about the position of the governor's office regarding camping. And I just want to point out that, looking at the most recent executive order dated, or number 20-56, it does say that dispersed and remote camping sites for single household use are permitted. But it does say both private and public developed campgrounds remain closed to recreational camping, and that would be through May 31st. That would be the governor's position. So, you know, the beach, again, there's not direction from the Minnesota Department of Health on. And then, of course, the playground has been discussed adequately already, so. So you, you may want to make a partial opening, I guess, or use, you might want to restrict uses. But right now, the governor's order is to not allow camping unless it's dispersed, single use camping only.
Okay. Counselor Kraus.
I guess my question would be, I wouldn't have a problem making a motion to allow it to be open, but I still feel that ultimately, it would be up to the committee to come up with the safety and how to safely open it, correct? Right?
A preparative plan?
A preparative plan. So I guess I would, I would make a motion to allow the beach to open if the committee's able to meet and create a preparative plan. But we can't open the campground as per the stay-at-home order anyway until the earliest June 1st, and we have a meeting that day.
Yep.
So I feel like if they can, and there's a recommission meeting on Wednesday as well, correct?
Yep.
Which would, that would handle the lifeguard. So if we can get the prepared plan in place, I would be okay with it, with it opening, at least the beach portion opening, and then see what you can do with the pavilion. But that's what the committee's kind of for, in my opinion, would be to make that determination. Does that make sense?
Yep. Clean that up and make it a motion.
Okay. So I move that we open the beach and playground portion of City Beach, leaving the campground closed until the governor says otherwise, with the stipulation that the City Beach Committee creates a preparative plan and figures out what is going to be open and not open at City Beach.
Excellent. Do we, does everyone understand the motion? If so, then I would accept a second at this time.
I'm sorry, Lisa.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Discussion?
Is this some plan that we're going to be able to look at at our next meeting? Their preparedness plan or what? Do we have to approve that, or is that just, we just go ahead with it?
I would, it would be my assumption that we would just allow that committee to do the preparative plan. That's, Joe's nodding his head as well.
Yeah. It would be my, my hope would be that they could meet, come up with a plan, and open it safely with their discretion.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. Any other discussion? Any concerns with the motion? The only concern I had was to make sure that a preparative plan was, and he's added that, so. With that being said, I would, I would call the question. Counselor Deech.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Kraus.
Aye.
Counselor Buller.
Aye.
And all vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have a discussion on the deadlines to the Journal as they've moved to a once-a-week International Falls Journal. City Administrator.
Well, Mayor, we just had, again, we had briefly brought it up at the last meeting, and the Journal had, again, gone to a once-a-week publication on Thursdays. And so it's necessary for us to have all of our required information to them, not later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday preceding that Thursday. So our council meetings aren't normally till the following Monday, so what I'm, I'm pointing out is that we need to identify a date certain when information has to be submitted to the city for, for the following meeting. And we really need to get stuff by the end of the day on Monday to give staff time to prepare the draft agenda and get it to the newspaper prior to the 5:00 Tuesday deadline. I would say that the council should also be open to allowing us to add items to the agenda at any point during the week, because we don't want to have to hold off for an additional two weeks after that. I mean, we're really looking at a three-week window. So one of the concerns and one of the discussion points I would like to have with the council is, is it even necessary for us to publish the agendas any longer if we have to do it so far in advance? And, and, you know, I know the council, particularly the past council and the past mayor, were very concerned about transparency. But we have social media where we can place items on the, on Facebook. We can use our website. We can put stuff out on Instagram if we need to regarding our meeting agendas. And I think there's opportunities for people to know what we're going to have on our agenda without necessarily publishing it all the time. But we can do so with the understanding, I think, that we can continue to add items to the agenda between Monday evening and Friday morning, when the packet has to be completed and sent out to the council.
Okay. One of the concerns that I've had from, from the time that I got on city council is, I love that our city council puts out our agenda for people to see, whether it's been in the Journal, it's been online, it's on a Facebook account. So we're giving access, as much access as we can, for people to be able to be knowledgeable of what we, what we're doing. I've seen other levels of government, both locally and outside the area, that does not do nearly as much as the city of International Falls does to try to educate its residents on what is happening in their local government. With that being said, I am slightly concerned as well, because, I mean, even, even as early as today, we had something that had to get put on the agenda because it just came up, and there's no time to deal with it until, until Wednesday, and by then it would be too late. So the deadlines are a concern for me. And I also know that our newspaper has been so good to our community and especially to our council and make sure that our information is out. But I am concerned on trying to get out the information essentially Tuesday morning, and I know it doesn't have to be until 5:00, but it takes a good portion of the day to get everything together and get that out before it would get to the Journal. So I guess I understand your concern on whether we should continue or set a, a deadline specific to getting that information out. But I also think that us being able to put stuff out on social media on Fridays or Thursdays, whatever that is, is also a willingness that we have, that we've been doing a really good job on. With that being said, I would, I would open up the council's thoughts to how we proceed with the new deadlines with the Journal. Counselor Deech.
This is something I think I would leave up to Ken and yourself.
Well, thank you. Counselor Nelson.
I don't beat myself. Um, yeah, this is a hard one to, to add to, but everything has to be in, if I'm understanding correctly, everything would have to be into the Journal by Tuesday?
Yes.
At 9:00 AM?
No, 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM.
Just the agenda.
Just the agenda.
Tuesday by 5:00 PM.
Just the agenda, but the city would have to get all of that compiled. We'd have to get all the information into the city so we can compile it to get the agenda out.
Okay. Then, you know, my, my inclination is to lean towards Tuesday morning-ish. I don't know if you said an exact time, and just make it a priority for Tuesday, just because I feel like people need that, that extra time, because we do have additions and deletions and that kind of stuff as it is, that I worry that if we cut it back too much, we're just going to, we're going to be approving a lot of additions every week. And it doesn't allow people the opportunity to know what's on the agenda. You know, most people are on Facebook, that they'll probably see it, but I always worry about, you know, John Smith, who is 70 years old, that lives down the road, that doesn't have Facebook, and, and he misses an opportunity for something that I really, I would incur or agree with Tuesday morning.
Okay. Sounds good. Counselor Kraus?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, just looking at today's agenda, there's six additions and one deletion on just two days' agenda that wasn't in the newspaper. So I, I don't necessarily know that we can put out an agenda at, on Tuesday, I mean, one week, basically, before the meeting. Have that, because if we're going to say our deadline is like 9:00 AM on Tuesday morning, I mean, our meeting is at 5:30 the following Monday. It's essentially like seven, I, I just don't know that, I think our agenda is too fluid for that, in my opinion. I'm not saying we shouldn't publish it, but it just, I mean, even this agenda right here has six additions and one deletion. So it is not the agenda that's, that was published in Saturday's newspaper, or our last Thursday's newspaper, as the case may be now. But so, I just don't, I would assume that there's going to be so many additions and deletions that it's just going to remain the same, so I don't know how up to date it currently is.
Right.
It's just my opinion on that.
I hear you. Okay. Counselor Buller, your thoughts on this?
Well, I've always the same frustration. I think we can't put out an agenda that's going to be the agenda. So I think what we need to do is just put a notification in that we are going to have a meeting at next Monday, when it comes out. When we have to have this in, we're going to have a meeting. This is what's on the agenda so far, and that's all we can do. There's just nothing else we can do. And then they put it on our Facebook page, all the updates on the agenda. And once, once people find out that, they could find it on the Facebook page, even if John Smith, 70-year-old, doesn't have it, he knows somebody who has it, and he's going to tell them, if you see a change on there, let me know, because I'm interested. So it's just, it's just a matter of, we just can't do it. I mean, we can put that, we're going to have a meeting, we can tell the agenda to that date, but after that, it's just all something's changed, probably.
Right.
Can't do it, I mean.
And our deputy administrator just put in our chatroom box, if we don't officially publish the agenda in the Journal, a weekly deadline still needs to be established in order to get the information on the website, social media, in a timely fashion. For example, if we choose 5:00 PM being the deadline, the materials need to be a Wednesday 5:00 PM deadline with all the materials due to admin by noon on Thursday. So I, I think that's backwards, but same concept.
And you know, the more I hear you talk about it, I agree with Leon. You guys take care of it.
All right. So the, the, I guess, I guess the first question that we have would be, do we continue to advertise our agenda in the Journal or do we not? I guess that would be the first question that we have on this particular issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Although I agree that having the agenda there is important, and they do a great job, it's not the agenda. It's not. And if you figure that you're going to put it in on Tuesday, I can guarantee you that the additions and deletions from that is going to be like 10 every week. So it's not even that, it's not that agenda. So it's really, it's really difficult. And we only meet twice a month. So, you know, if we were meeting weekly, it would be one thing, like, okay, we can push that back, it's fine, and we'll make sure everybody knows what's going on. But I just, there's going to be, I mean, we've got seven today.
Right. So, so maybe this is the compromise that we could come up with. If the, if the city did a, took out a spot in the paper weekly, as we do right now, giving direction on how to get to our, our agendas without printing the agenda in the paper, we could also use that area as, if, if we can, based off of what we can do with, with public funds. If we could put that in with whatever else we're putting out there with. We have some stuff coming up with I&amp;I. We have other issues that at any given time are coming up. Just a note from the city area that we could advertise in there saying, this is what's going on, our agenda can be found at.
And could I add what, I mean, I love that idea, and I really feel like there's certain items, like our public hearings, that we could certainly put in there. And, you know, there's other things, like, we're going to pay the bills, we're going to approve minutes. I mean, there's certain, there's, there's bits of copy that are, that are kind of, dare I say, wasted, that, yeah, we're going to have the minutes, yeah, we got to approve the agenda, you know? So I mean, there's, so if we could kind of condense it down to hit the major pieces, like the, you know, the, the public hearing, whatever, that kind of stuff we're going to do. And then kind of say, hey, for other information, more up to date, check here, or maybe have, dare I say, have some copies available at City Hall if somebody really wants to come pick one up on a Friday. Like, you know what I mean? Like, have it available on paper, just come on, knock on the window, and we'll give you one, kind of thing, like, or just have them out in the lobby, or, I don't know. But, you know, I mean, there's certain pieces of the agenda that aren't going to change. We're going to pay the bills, we're going to approve the, the agenda, we're going to approve the minutes. So if we could use that copy for something else, then, then, yeah, I would be, I'd be up for that.
So, Mayor, I'm hearing that the council would be open to having a meeting notice published in the newspaper prior to the meeting date, identifying some of the, that there is a meeting, that the agenda can be found on our website and on our Facebook page, have some standard language about that. If there's special things that we know are going to be on there regarding a required public hearing and stuff, we can identify some of that in that, in that narrative. And, and then we will make sure it's on our webpage, it's on our Facebook page. At any time, people can contact our office, and we will email out, and we have a list of people that we email our agendas when that's completed and finalized. And, and I think we need to make the notation that we're having a deadline for submittal of information by Thursday noon at the latest, so that we can get it in the agenda, get the agenda prepped on Friday and get it out to you when our offices close at noon on Friday. So that's essentially only 24 hours. But that's, and if we get stuff earlier, that's always better. But sometimes, you know, individuals are waiting on other information to be submitted, and we just need to have a firm deadline. So I think we can accommodate your interest in having some notice and still having it in the paper. It'll be abbreviated and probably shorter, but make it clear that people know where to go to try and find out what's actually on the agenda. And we will add to that over the course of the two weeks between meetings all the time. And anybody can, again, contact us, and we will email those agendas out when they're sent out on Fridays to the council. sent out on Fridays to the Council.
Sounds good. Let's have a motion to accept what Ken just said.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus to continue advertising with the Journal with a condensed version of the agenda, how to find, or a condensed information on where you can find the agenda, key points of the agenda, and information on how to, or the submittal dates for stuff, and whatever else Ken said. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second by Counselor Bowler. All right. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none. Well, yes, Counselor Deitch.
Sometimes, I hate to say with not insulting anyone, hopefully, sometimes we have too much talk on things that do not need to be hashed over so much. I'm a firm believer in one person make that decision, or two people, and as I said, in this case, yourself and Administrator Anderson would be the two prime people.
Yeah.
My thoughts.
And I understand that, Counselor Deitch, but when we're talking about city funds and how we're going to be spending cash, I think that it does really come into a Council discussion, but I appreciate your thoughts wholeheartedly. All right, so I will call the question at this point. Counselor Deitch.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Kraus.
Aye.
Counselor Bowler.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. We have nothing under the consent agenda. Our next item is under new business, which is the observation of Pride Month in June 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved, Counselor Deitch.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question. Counselor Deitch.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Kraus.
Aye.
Counselor Bowler.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving amendment to the Cooching County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. See attachment number one. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
Counselor Bowler, so moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Question. Counselor Deitch.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Kraus.
Aye.
Counselor Bowler.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next is preparation and implementation of Inflow and Infiltration Elimination Plan. Consider proposed options for preparation of a bridging plan by Winsmith, which used to be WSN. Ken, do you want to give background on this one?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, the North Cooch has prepared a letter, which you've been included in. It came from the North Cooching Area Sanitary District Board Chair Terry Murray, talking about the need to submit an INI elimination plan by June 8th, and we've had conversations, or they've had conversations as well, with the MPCA. There's a proposal to extend that timeframe out to as late as March 31st of 2021, but they're asking for the City of International Falls to have our final revised INI elimination plan to them by November 15th. Attached to that letter is information that's been prepared by Winseth, which is our consulting engineering firm, and they've identified two options, option one and option two, and their recommendation is to go forward with option two, which is to extend the city's INI elimination plan submittal out to September of 2021, which is, goes beyond the MPCA's requirement to have North Cooch's final plan, which includes our plan, to them no later than March 31st. So that would be an extension of the date that the MPCA has presently offered. Option one would be moving forward and submitting the information to North Cooch by November of 2020, and then giving North Cooch the time between November 2020 and March 31st to finish their work and submit it to the MPCA. So I think we want to have a conversation about the options that the Council would see fit moving forward, and what our submittal will be to our recommended proposal to the North Cooch Area Sanitary District before their meeting on June 8th, or their deadline, and I know they have a meeting tomorrow morning to also discuss this item.
Okay. I'm going to open up the conversation to Counselor Bowler, which is one of our representatives on North Cooch. What are your thoughts on the bridging plan?
Well, my thoughts on that bridging plan are, we've had extensions after extensions so far, and they've already offered to give it to us until the end of November. I would say let's try to get in what we can at that point, because that's what they've offered. I just think we're just pushing them, pushing and pushing and pushing, and if at that point we can't do it, then we can ask for the extension through 2021. But right now, my thoughts are that we need to get on this thing right now and try to have that done by November. I would go with option one, would be my thought, because, I mean, we pushed them enough ready, pretty soon it's going to be, they're going to be done with us. That's how I feel, but maybe there's other sentiments out there, but if at that point we aren't, if at that point we aren't prepared enough for it, then I think they'll probably give us an extension if they had a good reason, but right now, to extend it out to 2021, I think that's kind of asking a little too much.
I'm just going to check to see if we have anyone from the engineering firm online right now. Do we have anyone from Winsmith online with us right now? I don't believe we do. So, all right. I went through these plans, and one of the things that I really wanted to do is kind of sit down with Walt and Public Works in general and just kind of go through it, but time was not our friend moving forward. What was the recommendation from Winseth on this?
Option two.
Option two? And, okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Please, yes.
So do they, is North Cooch going to meet on June 8th? To submit this, is that, or we have to have it to them by June 8th, or they're submitting it? When is the next North Cooch meeting?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And then when's the one after that? June?
They meet once a month.
They meet once a month, okay, so that's why, because I guess my question would be is, why isn't Public Works coming forward with a recommendation? I mean, this really feels like it's Public Works, and I understand the pandemic of where we're at, but it really feels to me like, that this is, I can't give you a, I just have to go with what Public Works says, or what Winseth says, or, you know, maybe what Ted says.
Right, and here's where, here's where that issue came in. If you look, the bridging plan that came in, came in on May 11th. By the time it got to us, it was, I think, Wednesday, and then we didn't have time to get the 72-hours notice to have a Public Works meeting before we had today's meeting. So that was what the hiccup was. We actually wanted to all sit down and have a discussion about that, it just was not able or feasible to do based off the time restraints, which is, again, correct me if I'm wrong, City Administrator, but that's what all of this is about, is timelines, and we're working in the middle of the North Cooch Sanitary District, and they're working with MPCA and Rainier and East Cooch, and all the timeframes are being set up to the point where we either have to have meetings to discuss it, and then we're meeting, we're missing the next deadline. So that's where, you're absolutely right, and in a perfect world, that's what we wanted to have is, but I do believe that the Public Works Director did reach out to Commissioner Bowler, or, I'm sorry, I don't even know who you are, Counselor Bowler, on this very issue, and I think I, I would, I would, please. Well, Ken has something to add real quick.
Maybe for the Council's information, just to try and make it simpler, but on the page four of the bridging plan that Winseth had approached, on the last page, it says overview of differences between option one and option two, and that lays out, well, what's different between option one besides the timeframe, and what's going to be done differently in option two than what can be done in option one. And you can see that there's basically six bullet points there. The first is that we would do some additional televising and analysis in the spring of 2021, when we have high groundwater, and we can look at the service laterals as part of that televising project. So we would look at the service lines that go from the main up to the houses as much as we can as part of that analysis. The second one would be is, in the summer of 2021, they would have findings from the home and building inspection program, so that'll give us more time to actually get into everybody's home, see how that's plumbed, see if people have connections of their drain tile or sump pumps into the sanitary sewer, which is not permitted by MPCA rules. We would also have the findings from the 2021 smoke testing, which they would propose to do some this year. We would also have the monitoring that we would be doing with the sanitary sewer lining project in 2020, and we can do the monitoring in 2021 to see if that's been very successful and have more time to prepare that report. Have the findings from the flow monitoring study done in early spring 2020 during high groundwater, I guess that's on there too. And then the monitoring study would be done in late summer of 2021 after the, we were planning on doing that lining project this year, and we would do an additional lining project next year if it looks like it's working, and then we can have some more flow monitoring of that done. And so I think the engineers' position is, is that they'd like more time to do that. I think there's some frustration at a staff level that we're not further along, because we've known we've had this schedule of compliance for quite a period of time, but, you know, one of the things is that, you know, better information in, better information out, and hopefully we can better utilize our resources to come up with a good plan versus trying to rush it, maybe with incomplete data, and maybe not have as good a plan. But as you heard, Counselor Bowler is very comfortable in really trying to press forward and get as much as we can done, and if we can't get it done within the timeframe that we have now, perhaps at the 11th hour again this fall, we can ask for another extension. So that's the other option, and it's kind of a difficult decision to make, but in a short discussion, that's essentially what the issues are, I think.
Okay. So basically, as I'm understanding it, Winseth just wants more time to move forward.
To do that additional work that would be outside of what's identified in the option one plan.
Okay.
Yes.
And so then, I guess I would ask Director Brokaw, what are your recommendations for option one or option two with this?
Excuse me, Mayor, I didn't catch what option one and option two was. I just signed it. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. INI, you love talking INI.
I know you know I love talking INI. So Counselor Bowler is pushing for option one. As I understand, Winseth wants option two, does some additional stuff. I understand that timing has been one of the big issues that we've had on this project, and what are your thoughts? Option one or option two, and what are the advantages to either of them?
Well, I think, you know, the impression I've gotten from the MPCA and North Cooch Sanitary Sewer District is, they want option one, but you're dealing with Winseth, who feels that there's not enough time to collect enough quality data to give a engineer's answer through the INI issue.
Is that because they're, is that because they're overstaffed or understaffed? Is that because we have too much of a problem? I mean, what, what is the underlying thing? Because I want to make sure that we have an engineering firm that is able to do stuff on the timelines that we're being dictated by the MPCA.
No, and I don't, I don't think it's a staffing issue, I think it's a seasonal issue. We've missed the spring runoff, so I think what they're looking for is, it's not a staffing issue, it's making sure that they can give a thorough enough report to collect enough data to be comfortable with telling the MPCAs where the issues are and what it's going to fix them.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions for either Director Brokaw or the City Administrator regarding option one or option two? All right, with that, please.
I got a question here, Mr. Mayor. Ted, wouldn't it be possible to stay with option one, but also give them the information, give them the statement that the information might not be as good as we could do in 2021, and we will try to meet that deadline, but if we need to, it could possibly have to be extended? Is that something that would be, maybe make them a little happier? I don't know.
Absolutely. I actually just had that conversation with Winseth this afternoon, is, you know, I think if they're not comfortable with the timeframe, they need to add the part to the bridging document that states that we don't, you know, we feel pressure for the timeline, that we're not going to be able to get the quality data that we think we need. I told them to make that part of the bridging document, that you're dealing with engineers, right? So our, you know, they want to make sure 100% they're giving the quality data that they, they need to collect it to be able to give their engineering opinions.
Yeah. But do you think rather than, rather than to accept, just tell them, no, we don't want it, we want option two, that we say we'll try to do option one, but at the end of the day, we might not have the right information, but we might have to have an extension, we'll try to do what we can and give you what data we can feel is, is we're comfortable with giving you that's accurate?
Yes, yes, and that's the one thing I had, I had directed, Winseth with, was if they wanted to make the recommendations for option two, that they better be ready to go ahead with option one if it got rejected, you know, so that we're not standing around for another month trying to figure out what we're going to do. Is, if we want to ask for option two, fine, if option two's rejected, I want to be on the ground running, collecting the data we need, because it's got to be November.
All right. So is there any other, any other information that we need before we decide if we're going with option one or option two? I would, I would feel comfortable if Counselor Bowler would make a motion on how to handle this as the Chair for Public Works.
I would make a motion that we go with option one, with the stipulation that the MPCA knows that if we don't have the data that we feel is, we're comfortable with giving them totally, that we can hopefully go then that we can hopefully go then extend it to option two. So we'll do what we can to do with option one at the moment. Let's get going with it.
Okay. So we have a motion to go with option one and make it clear to the PCA, MPCA that if we don't have the correct information, we want to move towards extension of time. Is that correct? Or get to collect more data?
Collect more data for, for, yeah.
Okay. So do we have a second to that?
Yes.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just want to make the point, you know, and the discussion was, is, you know, make it clear to the MPCA. And generally, the way the system or the process has been working is that all three entities, Rainier, East Cooch, and the City of International Falls provide their information and their I and I elimination plans to North Cooch. And then North Cooch typically has the communication directly with the MPCA. So that's typically how the process would work.
And, and we have our representative that'll be at the meeting tomorrow and let everybody know exactly how we're moving forward.
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to move forward with option one with the possibility to extend timeframe so that we can do more work in the event that we have to, which gets us closer to option two. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. All right. Next, we'll go to setting a budget and finance meeting for 4:00 PM Thursday, May 21st. Budget and Finance Chair.
Mr. Mayor, I am not going to be in town that day, but if I can attend remotely, then I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Make that motion.
So I guess, well, before I make that motion, does that work for everybody else?
Their silence means yes.
Their silence means yes. Okay. Then I would move to have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting at 4:00 PM on Thursday, May 21st, 2020, either in person or via Zoom, as per the current meeting situation.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Councilor Deech, second.
You have a second by Councilor Deech. All right. Any discussion?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do have one point. Since I cannot be here in person, even though I am the Chair of this committee, would you be able to run the meeting since you'll have, you'll be here at City Hall?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we have.
One quick question. Is that meeting going to be up there?
It'll be available via Zoom or in person.
In wait?
Yep.
Okay.
Next, we have a resolution approving a city employee to return to work. City Administrator, can you give us background on that particular?
Sure. Just very basically, we do have a return to work policy, and we have an individual that's been out of work due to a employment-related injury. And so we would like to bring that employee back. And a medical provider has indicated that the person can do light duty. There's certain limitations as to weight and restrictive movements or motions, but they can return to work provided it's no more than eight hours a day. So I've just outlined a resolution that we're asking the council to adopt that would allow this person to come back to work as early as tomorrow and complying with those particular conditions that the medical provider has put on the light duty. I would qualify my recommendation to move forward with this resolution and suggest that in the fourth whereas, we remove the last part of that message that said, subject to waiving any obligation of the city to pay for costs of the diagnosed injury. And then also deleting number two under the now therefore be it resolved. And number two reads that the employee shall indemnify and hold the City of International Falls harmless from any and all liability whatsoever for further aggravation or injury to the injury diagnosis that is limiting work to light duty, including any future obligations from workers' compensation claims for said injury. We had that language in a previous resolution that the city council had adopted, but that was for a person that had injuries that were not work-related initially, and so we wanted to bring them back. The previous council was very concerned about perhaps aggravating a previous injury. So.
It was this council.
Yeah. Well, my recommendation would be is move forward with that, this resolution with those two items deleted from the draft resolution that we provided for you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a question?
Yeah.
So I don't disagree, but my question is, it's my understanding that firefighter engineers work 12 on, 12 off and rotate? How are we going to work an eight-hour person into that schedule?
Well, it's a different schedule. It'll be light duty, and what we're envisioning for this person is to work in concert with the summer help to conduct the BLIGHT investigation and enforcement process. So the person will essentially work eight to five. We might start out this week with lesser hours just to allow the person to acclimate again to the work schedule and stuff. But, well, that's up to the department head.
But to clarify, they would not be coming on as a firefighter engineer, they'd be coming on in a different capacity?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's what's the light duty. They're not, they're not able to come back.
So we'll still have a firefighter engineer on that will start to do all those duties whilst this individual? Okay. That was, that was my question because the language looks like they're going to just come on on an eight-hour, which I was just making sure that that was. Okay. Thank you.
And then on the line, we have the union representative that I believe is representing this employee. And I believe I can unmute them. I cannot. Joe, are you available? There we go.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Do you have any concerns or anything with the changes that the city administrator had just brought up?
Now that you've eliminated those sections, I don't see an issue with it because with those other previous sections in there, it was illegal. So now that you've eliminated it, it should work.
Okay. Well, and I promise you, it was not our intention to do anything illegal.
Absolutely.
So I, I, I don't know, I will, do you know if the employee would like to speak? Because I don't want to call out specifically who it is. Are you reaching out on their behalf?
Well, you know, I represent him. He wanted me to represent, you know, how he feels about it. He wants to come back to work. He's anxious to come back to work. And he feels he can work under those conditions as well.
Okay.
So.
So from the union side, you feel comfortable and we could move forward with this at this time?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So with that being said, the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution with the changes that were outlined by the city administrator?
Councilor Deech, the move.
Councilor Deech, Councilor Deech for the motion, Councilor Buller for the second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, Councilor Deech.
Please, yep.
Will this individual on light duty be available to assist on BLIGHT inspection?
Yep. That is, that is what one of the primary duties or one of the duties that would be asked of him to do.
Wonderful.
All right. Hearing no other discussion, I'll call the question. Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Buller, or I'm sorry, Councilor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
Okay. And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would just ask the business agent to indicate to his employee that he's able to report tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM if he's ready and able and willing to.
Okay. Then, Joe, did you hear that information? You can tell the employee they can come back to work 8:00 AM tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, I can tell them that they are online as of right now, too.
Okay. Very good. We'll see you at 8:00 tomorrow morning.
All right. Everybody, just to let you know, Councilor Nelson is in Duluth with a loved one from a, in an emergency situation. So she has dropped off the line. So just let everyone know that Councilor Nelson is no longer with us on the line. Next, we have the consent for the mayoral appointment for a city representative to KCBA. And I would like to sit on that board. So my, my appointment would be Harley Droba. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that appointment.
Move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Next, we have a consent for the mayoral appointment for city representatives to the Recreation Commission. I would like to reappoint myself, Harley Droba. I would like to reappoint as the mayor, our first city representative that is not a elected official in Ashley Hall. And I would also like to appoint a second city representative that is not an elected official in Carla Olsen Line. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those three appointments.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Councilor Deech, second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus.
Aye.
Councilor Buller.
Aye.
And Councilor, or Mayor Droba, I'll vote yes, four zero. Motion carries. Next, reports. Do we have any other business to come before us? Okay. Hearing none, then I will go to reports of the administrator, attorney, department heads.
I have no report, Mayor.
Um, can I? City Attorney, do you have anything to add tonight? Have to unmute yourself if you're on. I don't see him on. All right. And department heads, any department heads have anything to bring up? All right. Hearing none, I do want to give kudos to one of our department heads. This last week, I was asked if the city was ready to bring employees back to work. And from Abbott Medical asked if we could, if they would be able to help us come up with preparative plans. I said that I, we had already announced all of our preparative plans, and we put them in place, and I sent them down there so that they could view it. They saw specifically one of our department heads' preparative plans, and it was for Public Works. And they said it was one of the best preparative plans that they had saw. The work that they put into it was incredible. And I do know that our Director of Public Works, Ted Brokaw, had reached out to the union and made sure that they were okay with what we were doing. He put some strict language in there to make sure that our employees and the public are healthy. And with that being said, I, as I understand it, some of the unions have asked to have some of that information to put their safety plans in based off of what International Falls had did. So to get a kudos from Abbott and to find out that they're sharing it with other cities, I think we did a really good job. And the City of International Falls has been one of the leaders in the COVID-19 preparative plans. And really, with the help that we've had with, with the county, with both Rainy Lake Medical Center and Ascencia, and all of the teamwork we've had in northern Minnesota to try to put this together, I think we're all doing a really good job. And so I just wanted to say thank you specifically to one of our department heads that went above and beyond, and it's definitely being shown around the state, his hard work. So thank you. Next, you guys all have received the police monthly report, our fire EMS monthly report, and the BLIGHT report. As for reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions, I will report last. I did ask today if Councilor Buller could give a report from the cemetery board on Memorial Day and moving forward with what that looks like and what's happening out Hello? Well, everybody's muted. Well, that's not good. We need a better system. Oh, and Steve's sending me, he can't hear me. Okay. Uh, hold on. All right. Walt, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Do you want to give a report about the cemetery board and what's happening out there?
Well, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow night. We're going to have all the, all the players involved. We're going to have Dave here for maintenance, we're going to have Steve Boyham here, we're going to have all the players to try to get on board for the, for the summer. And talking to Dave, I said, well, do we need to work 90, get to before Memorial Day? He said he's been out there picking up sticks, picking up, he says he's moved the tallest path, said he thinks, he thinks we're pretty good to go there. We've had some volunteers, especially with the BFW not having any, any type of Memorial Day service. Josh Koenig has been huge in volunteering out there. They pulled out some old shrubs by the memorial, they planted some daylilies, they're, they're trying to dress that up for Memorial Day. We've had some people that want to volunteer, and our biggest concern is that we have organized volunteers, not just people coming out and saying, well, I'm going to clean up these stones and that's it. We need to have it organized, and I, I do, we do want volunteers, if they want to come, we want them to do something. But we also need to coordinate it with Mona and Julie Johnson, have done a super job out there with maps in the cemetery. We've got a website now where you can go on there and you can, you can look at maps that they've done, if they're going to try to fix that up this year. We have new signage that needs to get put up. Once we get figured out where we want it, there's going to be different, there's going to be signs for each different block. There's also going to be some roadwork done out there this summer. Got the backhoe I got lined up last year, we're going to try to coordinate it with the city, but Ted got so busy, and I know this year it's going to be worse yet. So we'll try to coordinate it with a different, a different avenue. The county said last year we could use, they give us culverts where the culverts were bad, and there's just a lot of them that need to be lowered with speed bumps. There should be a lot of activity going out there this summer. Like I said, though, for Memorial Day, we wanted to, I talked to Jackie Glowak, Rashid has contacted me, and we're going to be, the First Hill, the BFW, and the Legion are going to be, going to advertise in the paper about what you can put out before Memorial Day and when it has to be off the cemetery also. So everybody will know that this is the way it has to be. We've got a lot of stuff going on. I've been, I got, I got. I've been, I got, I, I, I got a lot of calls the last two days on issues out there. Like, wow, but it's, it's been, it's been good. It's been really going, I think we're going to make some improvements out there this year. Volunteers are, there's, they've got a list of them, so we've, we've got people actually out, so it's, it's been great. Really good.
Well, and, uh, I, I believe you may have been on the council when, in, in the past, we were talked to about, uh, volunteers and, and it was, uh, it was kind of a touchy subject, and you're saying now that you guys are open to volunteers. If someone does want to volunteer at, uh, at the cemetery, how, who, how do they get in touch with someone so they are doing the right actions?
I think the best thing would be, would be to get ahold of Mona Johnson. Um, her phone number is 283-4229, and you're and Julie are, you know, they're out there steady all the time, and they, they know what needs to be done and what, what, where people can volunteer. Um, I don't want to, I don't want to disappoint people and, and push them away. If they've got a loved one that's out there, they've got a stone that needs to be picked up or something, we don't have any problem with doing that due to your own, due to your own stones, but we just don't want somebody just going out there and just taking off and, and, and just...
Some accountability.
Just go ahead and do it without, without direction, yes.
Right.
So, I mean, we, we do promote volunteers. We don't want, just, oh, not let them come out, but we do need to have some coordination and, and get the things done that need to be done.
Okay. And I'm going to, I'm going to...
Doing good stuff.
Okay. And I'm going to try to get, uh, the city attorney back on. I, I don't know what happened there, um, but he does have something to add, and I don't know why. All right. City Attorney.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Good. Uh, I just, for my report, I just wanted to, uh, indicate that I've been working with, uh, Kelly Myers, uh, on a number, uh, of, uh, BLIGHT issues involving some commercial properties, uh, and I know that that's of particular importance to Counselor Deech, and, uh, I just wanted to let the council know that we're working on those and hope to see some real progress in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other council committees, boards, or commissions? All right. Uh, hearing none, uh, we'll go to audience forum. Does anybody from the audience have something to bring to the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just spoke to, uh, that firefighter engineer, and he, he can't return to work until this resolution is presented to the League of Minnesota Cities, Natalie Ron, the examiner, and also the QRC have to approve it in order for him to return to work.
Okay. Well, we'll get it signed and, uh, we'll send it out tomorrow. So maybe Wednesday.
I didn't want you guys expecting, you know, he was worried. He said 8:00 in the morning, and he can't until those two approve it.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, we'll get that paperwork as, as fast as we can, and we'll, we'll coordinate moving on. Thank you, Joe, for that update.
All right. Thanks, Harley.
Yep. Anybody else have anything under audience? All right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you.
May I? I do want to say thank you. I, I, I didn't say anything at the beginning, and you all agreed with the repealing of the resolution. Uh, the mayor and I both had an opportunity today to participate in an interview with KSTP, the ABC affiliate out of the Twin Cities, which is the second Twin Cities channel to come up here and cover the border closing impact on our community because it's, it is, it's the second layer of Corona to us. So as our businesses are opening and we're slowly trying to bring life back into retail and hopefully soon restaurants and others, as long as the border remains closed, we still have a sizable portion of our greater community, like, unable to, uh, patron those businesses. And we also see the lack of tourism travel due to the border closing because of the, the loss of those travelers who come through our area, which we know are, you know, thousands and thousands a week in the summer that we are missing out on. So, you know, I, our, our businesses are really doing what we can to, to be, you know, to follow the rules, to be compliant. Business owners want to protect their staff. They want to protect their customers. They, um, you know, are, are doing that to the best of their ability, and I just appreciate your support of, of their reopening.
Okay. Well, thank you. And, and actually, that was, uh, that was what I was going to say in my, my quick report was the two things is, uh, partaking in that, uh, KSTP, um, interview about the, the challenges that we have being a border community with, um, our border closed. Um, so we, we did, uh, take part in that, and I believe, um, I reached out to one of our downtown businesses, The Hideaway, and Allison Stewart, uh, also was part of that interview along with, uh, one of our other residents who has, uh, um, a family member in Fort Francis that, uh, they can't see. She has the children, and her fiance, um, as she's pregnant with twins, has not seen her fiance in two months. So, um, those are the type of issues that we're dealing with up here. So that was a piece of what I wanted to say, and the other one was, um, I've been trying to be as open and communicative with our, uh, businesses as I can. I did reach out to all the businesses last Thursday on Main Street to the best of my ability, um, dropping off preparative plans so that they would have an opportunity to look at that information before they opened today. And today, I went downtown and, uh, I hit all the businesses that were open today. I went in just seeing how they were doing, um, and I guess today was pretty good. Um, a handful of the businesses said that, uh, it was a slow open, but it was good, and they did better business in the last, uh, or in today than they did in the last two weeks being, um, being, uh, curbside. And then we had one business that told me that they did so well today, they did better than the two previous weeks before they had to go to, before they closed. So, uh, our business community is getting a little bit of a shot in the arm that they needed, and, uh, a, as a follow-up, and I, I, I know that, uh, I know that Tricia would agree, our city council was not anti-business or anything like that. We're just trying to make sure that we're making, um, a balance between that health and that business, and so, um, I'm very happy that we did open it up, and, uh, I'm happy that the governor opened it up and made the, it a little bit easier on us, too. So, um, thank you for your comments. Do you have anything else to add?
I don't have anything.
All right. Anybody else have anything to bring up under open forum? All right. We do have correspondence from, uh, the discretionary grant, uh, for Cooching County. We did, uh, get information from the Library Board of Trustees, and, uh, we were notified of the cancellation of Memorial Day ceremonies from Peter Graham, uh, BFW Post. So with that being said, our next regular city council meeting will be on June 1st.
Mayor?
Yes?
Did you have an addition to the agenda on the, that was on the...
Oh, yes. Oh. Yes, we did have one, uh, thing that did not come. Thank, oh, thank you. You're the best ever. Um, there was an addition to the agenda that, uh, was brought up. It is to, um, provide, uh, a parade route for preschool, kindergarten, and graduation. We are not able to close down Main Street on short notice. Uh, so the proposed parade route would be to go on, uh, I'm sorry, it would be going on 11th Street and 13th Street, so it would just make a loop around Cary Park back to the school district. Um, they had, the school district has reached out to, uh, myself, Chief Manasa, and Chief Maston. We've all reviewed what they want to do, um, and they're okay with it. We just need, uh, council action to allow those, uh, that parade to go on. The dates are being set. But as again, it, uh, went through with Chief Maston, Chief, uh, Manasa, and myself, and there were no issues, uh, with those parade routes. So the Chair would entertain a motion to, uh, to approve those parade routes and those three parades. It was in that...
No, I know where it's at. I'll, I'll make the motion. I was just waiting to see if Walt, as Public Works, wanted to motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion?
Uh, just one point.
Yep.
Uh, maybe we should, uh, contact the county also because county, 11th Street is a county street. There's county road.
Okay. We'll follow up with them in the morning and just let them know what...
And I'm sure it'll be fine, but it, it is a county road, 11th Street is, so we should probably make sure the county's in the loop to it.
Okay. I will, I will, uh, follow up with that tomorrow morning.
Sounds good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Counselor Deech. Absent. Counselor Kraus.
Aye.
Counselor Buller.
Aye. I just unmuted myself, too. I just unmuted myself.
Counselor Deech.
Aye.
Okay. Counselor, uh, Kraus.
Aye.
Counselor Buller.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Thank you so much. I, uh, would have forgot that, and then all the kids would have been sad without their parade. All right. So, um, they would have been sad, too. All right. So we don't have anything else on the agenda. Our next council meeting will be on, uh, June 1st at 5:30. We do have a, um, committee of the whole meeting for Budget and Finance, uh, coming up on Thursday at 4:00 PM. So with that being said, we have no other business. This meeting is adjourned.